We'll now call this regular workshop meeting to order. We have a copy of the proposed agenda for the next meeting at your places and I would entertain a motion to adopt at this time.
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion, all of us in favor of the adoption signify as a nine?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Dr. Woodruff, I'm gonna turn it over you now to introduce our guest here and do the first time.
Council members, thank you very much. Many of you have had the experience of going and obtaining your driver's license. I know most of you are now old enough to have a legal driver's license. And when you've gotten that, many times you looked at the picture and you said, you know, I'd like another opportunity to get a different picture.
As the mayor said, somewhere at the age of getting taken away from.
Well, you didn't have to look at me when you said that. But because I didn't like my last picture, I had the opportunity to go to the local driver's license bureau and to get a real ID. And tonight, we're going to have the pleasure of Karen Seaburn, who is a driver's license examiner here in Jacksonville, talk to you and obviously the listening audience about the Real ID program, why it's important, and the implementation date. So at this time, Ms. Seaburn, please.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I'd like to thank you for having me be here. My presentation is, if you look at your slides on the papers, it seems a little bit long, but a lot of it is just stuff that I'm gonna quickly glaze over. A lot of it just has to do with the requirements needed to get that gold star and make your driver's license permit or ID a federally compliant ID license or so. The history of the Real ID is after the 9/11 attacks had occurred, it was discovered that all of the terrorists had obtained driver's license permits and IDs from various states using fraudulent means. So the US government wanted to come up with a way to make drivers, the issuance process of those documents more secure and a little bit more thorough, so to speak, so that we could make sure that the identification cards that we were issuing were actually being issued to people that were United States residents and were who, in fact, they said they were. They passed the Real ID Act in 2005. The implementation dates varied, looks like the standards were supposed to be effective 2008, and then there were certain extensions that were granted in 2011 and as far out as 2017. The federal compliance date now is October 1st of 2020. At that time, that gold star will be a requirement to do things such as fly commercially within the United States, access federal buildings and courthouses, or gain insurance into military installations or nuclear power plants. I don't know that that's a place many people regularly visit, but all of—
If you make pizza sometime—
I mean, maybe, I'm not sure. You know, it's just one of those ones that kind of sneaks in there. So all of the standards that have been implemented are overseen and set forth by the Department of Homeland Security. So these are not standards that the states have individually to alter an effect and choose and kind of pick and choose what they want to have accepted and what they don't want accepted. It's all run by Department of Homeland Security. Basically, the requirement that the Real ID enforces is that the federal agencies that will accept these identification cards, driver's license permits henceforth tonight will just be known as IDs. Just makes it tougher security standards, you know. It makes it a little tougher to get it because you have to bring in more documents. It's not like it was before where you could bring in one proof of address, one source identity document, like a social security card. Now you have to show multiple things in order to get that. We're actually verifying you as a person, you as a citizen, that you have a valid social security number and that you are, in fact, a resident of whatever state it is that you're trying to get issued this card in. As Dr. Woodruff showed earlier, the Real ID will be indicated, the symbol that has kind of been nationally chosen is this gold star. It does appear in different shades and tones and such, but they're basically just a gold star. Now, if you don't have the gold star, you can still be issued whatever ID card it is that you're going after. If you don't have the documents to become Real ID compliant right away, then you can still get what you're going after, but it's gonna have a statement on there, which we'll see in a moment, that says not for federal identification. Still valid as a driver's license ID card permit, you can still use it for the purposes that you use it now, going to the doctor, cashing checks, getting employment, things like that. It's just gonna affect you at those federal levels, doing those federal-type things like flying, you know, federal courthouses and buildings and such like that. North Carolina started issuing in May of last year. We actually became fully compliant in October of last year, and our gold star appears in the top right corner, if you're looking at the ID card. It is available to get on, like I said, driver's licenses, permits, and just plain state-issued ID cards. We just went over this. Like I said, I'm gonna kind of go through these slides here. I know I don't have a lot of time. Commercial airlines, military bases, federal facilities, and nuclear power plants. A big question that we get, especially in our area, because we have so many military bases, is, well, I have an active-duty ID card, or I have a retired ID card, or I'm a dependent member of an active-duty member. The response that we've got to give to people is that after that October 1st, 2020 date, those cards will no longer be allowed to be used to get you through airport security. If those cards were to be misplaced and you were off-base and you don't have that Real ID compliance symbol on your card, you would have a very hard time getting back on-base to get a duplicate of that. So we always encourage people, better to have it and never need it than find yourself in a situation where you need it and you don't have it. There's that not-for-federal identification, you can see circled in red. The other thing to point out is that if, like I said earlier, you can't get that Real ID if you're missing a marriage certificate, I heard the conversation earlier, something like that, you can always go for this non-compliant, it's a very harsh term, but the non-federally compliant card, this is not a get first time and never be able to get again. You can always come back with the appropriate documents and pay for a $13 duplicate. There is no extra charge to become compliant and get that gold star. You're just gonna pay the flat fee for whatever services you're seeking at that time, whether it be a duplicate or a renewal or a first-time issuance. Without the Real ID, not-for-federal identification, if you do not have the Real ID gold star, after that October 1st, 2020 date, you would have to contact the TSA or the federal facility or the military base or nuclear institution that you're wishing to visit and find out what other documentations they would require you to have for access. Because if you don't have that gold star, you're not gonna be able to get in. So we always say, call ahead, find out what you need, make sure you have it before you get there. Otherwise, you will more than likely be denied. Old standards that we used to have, like I said, you had to show like one form of ID and then you'd have to show proof of your social security number and then one proof of residence. With the new standards that we have for Real ID, you now have to show an identity document, the most common forms that we accept or that we see most often is gonna be the birth certificate or an unexpired passport, proof of your social security number, and two proofs of your North Carolina residence. And then if you have somebody that's an employee of the city that's come from another state, they would also have to bring in printed proof of insurance, but you're getting more into the driver's license requirements than you are Real ID with that. There we have that again. If you have a Real ID from another state, like I said, if you're transferring from another state or an employee's transferring from another state and they already have that gold star on their previously-issued driver's license, so somebody from Illinois comes in and they've got a gold star on that Illinois license, that gold star would take the place of the birth certificate or the unexpired passport, because those documents had to be shown previously to get that gold star. If you have a legal presence customer, what we call a legal presence customer, those are gonna be your permanent residents that have like the I-551 green card or the employment authorized card. There are other things that you would show as a legal presence customer. They are still eligible to get that gold star, but their documents are gonna differ a little bit. As far as the US government documents, especially in this area being military-based, you're gonna have citizens here of Jacksonville that are US citizens, but maybe they were born in Germany when their father was in the air force and they were at that base. Instead of using a birth certificate, they would have like a consular report of birth abroad. They'd still have to bring in the social security card and the two proofs of residence. This is something that we cannot overstate enough, the importance of it. It affects mostly our women. It does affect some men if they're adopted or if they've legally changed their name, but our female citizens, if they've been married or divorced and their name has changed, it is very important that we have what the Department of Homeland Security has termed name traceability. So we start with our source document, which is more commonly the passport or the birth certificate, that's gonna have the maiden name on it. If they've married, divorced, remarried, anything like that, we have to have those legal documents that show that legal name change so that we can connect. In my case, my maiden name is Bags. When I got married, my married name was Seaburn. I had to have that marriage certificate that linked my maiden name to the name that was now appearing on my social security card. Without that legal document that shows that name change, we can't go forth with the Real ID, because we have to have that name traceability to show how I went from being this person at birth to being this person now as a mother of two wily, rambunctious boys. As far as the social security number is concerned, we can use the social security card issued by the Social Security Administration, a 1099 tax form, as long as it's got the name and the full social security number on it, the W-2 tax form, or our pay stub with the full social on it. The part that we have to be careful with with the pay stubs is a lot of employers have gone to showing just the last four on that pay stub. So when we say a pay stub, we always have to emphasize, make sure it's got the full social listed on it. Two proofs of address. Proof of address are commonly, you can use a bank statement, vehicle registration card, utility bill, insurance policy. If you have a current North Carolina license and it's not yet expired and the address on there is valid, that can count as one proof. We also have gone to, they were having a lot of issues with, especially like married couples where most of the bills were in one spouse's name instead of the other. So they've also gone on to accept it. I don't believe it's listed on the PowerPoint, so I wanted to make sure I touched on it, was if you have personal mail, say you got a birthday card from grandmother, as long as it's got your name and the address listed on there and it has a valid US postmark, we can also use that as a proof of residence. This is just going in further, like I said, military orders documents, your voter precinct card, housing lease contract, school records. As far as minors go, a lot of my, I know that my sons, who are seven and 10, don't have any utility bills in their name. Thank God for that. So when you have minors that are under the age of 18, we can use things like school transcripts, medical documents from the dentist's office, the doctor's office, if they have bank accounts or savings accounts, court documents that may have their name, magazine subscriptions if they subscribe to the Boy Scouts of America and they get something from them in their name, we can use that. Leasing or housing contract, if it's got their name listed as an occupant at that residence, and tac recs, tac recs, I can't talk, tax records that have the minor listed as a dependent. Only tax record that we do not accept is a 1040. And the reason that we don't accept a 1040 is because that's a document that can be created by any, you know, by the taxpayer, and you can input the information that appears on that. So it would have to be a tax record that is more official, I guess, than you can say the 1040 is. Like I said, medical or hospitalization, hospitalization records, recreational teams, if they're on a sports team, they can use any of that. Hunting and fishing license around here is a big one, uses proof of residence as well as a concealed carry permit. If you have that and it's unexpired and the address is good, we can use that. Pre-printed bank statement, went over a lot of this already. If you want to obtain a Real ID, you are always welcome to do a walk-in at our office. We would love to see you. I will tell you, with the high population of our area with all of the military bases, unfortunately, we do often have high wait times. To avoid having that high wait time, you can call the headquarters call center, which is located out of Raleigh. Phone number is listed right up here, 919-715-7000 to the listening audience, and you can request an appointment. When you do so, you would just name the driver's license office that you want to be seen at. And we do have a new burg, well, the burg office has been there, but we've just reopened that. Wait times haven't been too terrible out there. We have our Jacksonville office, New Bern, Morehead City, and Kinston, I believe, are the closest, South Wilmington and North Wilmington also. To get the Real ID, like I stated earlier, costs are the same as the standard duplicates and renewals. There is no extra cost, whether you're getting the gold star or you're getting that not-for-federal identification statement on there. You do receive a temporary paper copy at the office. The paper copy does not have the Real ID indicator on it. That paper copy is valid for 60 days. More often than not, you get the hard copy in the mail at the address that you provide within about 15 business days. Usually, you receive a little bit sooner than that. Are there any questions from anybody?
Yes, I have two questions to ask you. The first question is, consider how much a person is vetted. Once you receive the Real ID, when you go through TSA check at the airport, will that now count as a pre-screen check, or do you still have to go through the full-fledged check of taking off your belt, you know, your computer and everything? Does this help with that process, or do you have to fill something out separately again with TSA?
If you want to do the pre-screen check, you still have to fill out something separately for them. This does not get you vetted as far as having to do the, what I call the strip search at the airport. What it does is when you show that, and I can personally speak from this, I just flew to see my father on the West Coast, having the gold star just means that when you're going through that, the security check line, and you have to stop at the person, show them your boarding pass and your identification card, when you have that gold star on there, they're like, this person's vetted, they have a Real ID, and you move on through. As opposed to after October 1st, 2020, if you don't have this gold star, you're gonna get hung up, they're gonna start requesting to see more documents. It does make it, it doesn't make it necessarily that you go through security faster, it just is gonna make it easier, especially if you're doing a trip, like a family vacation and you're traveling to Walt Disney World in Florida. If you've got that gold star, you're not gonna have to carry passports and birth certificates and social security cards for your six children and your spouse and your aunt and uncle, it's just gonna be that one identification card. Speaking on going through security also, I forgot to mention that when you have the minor, if you're traveling with your minors with, and you're going through security, I'll use myself as an instance for ease of explanation. If I'm traveling with my 10-year-old and 7-year-old sons, I have a Real ID. As minors, they fall under my Real ID umbrella. They don't have to have Real ID cards for themselves. However, if I were to fly them unaccompanied to see their grandmother or their grandfather, they then would have to have their own Real ID compliant, because they're not flying underneath the umbrella of anybody else. So no, it doesn't get you through that pre-screen process, you still have to go through that, but having it gives you that federally compliant identification card that will be a single form of identification. It would be the only ID that you have to show to get through the security.
And the second question, or it could be more of a statement, DMV opened up a new office on Camp Bouchard, didn't it? Isn't that one opening or supposed to be opening?
So I actually am one of the examiners that was, that's assigned out at that mobile unit. They do have an RV mobile unit that's out there, the first Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of each month. It is a by appointment only mobile unit. You would have to go to, I believe it's lejeune marines dot mil, and there's a link on there that you can go on to schedule an appointment. We actually were supposed to be out there, well, we were out there, the first Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of April, however, it was a bust for no other reason than the network went down. Truth be told, a goose flew into a transformer and we lost all power. That's actually a true story. Cooked the goose. So we're hoping to be back up and running out there as of May, is the intention, and that is, so far as I've heard, as an examiner assigned out there, is supposed to be the plan. So hopefully, that will be up and running and there will be no low-flying geese, I hope. Were there any other questions?
I think to summarize, Glenn, would you go back to the first couple of slides so that the listening audience, we can repeat a couple of very important pieces of information?
Okay.
We'll take us all the way back. Just to repeat one more time, keep, let's move forward a couple of slides. Okay. Today, you can go get a driver's license if all you want to do is just drive a vehicle, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you don't have to do anything other than what you normally do, pass the test, show that you're driving a Ford F-150 pickup truck, you get your driver's license, or something similar there, too.
Vehicle varying, yes.
Yeah, I didn't mean to throw your curve there.
That's all right, I'm good.
But if you have a valid driver's license, come October 1, 2020, and you want to go into an airplane, fly commercially, you're gonna have to have a Real ID.
Yes, sir.
If you want to get on the base, even though you may have a base pass that's been issued in the past, let's say by the Chamber of Commerce, but you want to get on the base, you're gonna have to have a Real ID.
Yes, sir. With the exception of, even after the October 1, 2020 deadline, your active-duty military, your retired military, and your dependent military will still be able to use that, their ID cards. That will still be a valid form of identification to use to board the base, but anybody that is a civilian or is a veteran or has the base pass issued will have to also have the Real ID compliant ID card.
And again, the documentation necessary to get your Real ID is what?
In simple terms, if you are a US citizen, we would have to see a birth certificate, an unexpired passport, a Real ID compliant card from another state, or if you're, and that would be for US citizens, and then for your legal presence customers, those are gonna start going into, there's several of those, but your I-551 green cards, your 766 employment authorization cards, those are gonna be our identity documents. And then you'd have to show one proof of social security, which can be the card, a W-2, a 1099, or a pay stub with your full social, and then two proofs of your North Carolina residency.
Okay. Counsel, any additional questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you having me.
Good job. Thank you very much. Well done.
One more thing, I'm sorry. I set these down on each of your placemats here, but I'm gonna leave all of these here if you guys should run across anybody that needs them. Those are all of the requirements listed out in a brochure that shows what's required to get that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second item on the workshop this evening is a demonstration of the water and sewer rate model. Alan Weeks with the Finance Department, assisted by Carolyn and Gail, will give an overview. And at this time, Alan, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm just gonna talk briefly about our rate model as it stands now. The rate model that we'll be looking at is the rate model as it has come from our consultant. It has not been updated, and that, and I'll talk about how we will go about through the process of updating the rate model. Back in 2017, to begin this process, we were gonna conduct a bond feasibility study in conjunction with how getting revenue bonds for the Parkwood project that we had in our CIP. Our current model we were using was, we'd had that since 2009, so we decided to go out and send out an RFP to see what other types of models were out there, and we chose StanTech based on their project team experience, the functionality of the rate model, and the cost. So the components of the rate model that I'll be talking about tonight will be the assumptions that we have to enter into the rate model, the budget and actual revenue and expenses, the capital improvement plan, and then the debt. The screenshots that I have here may be a little bit small. They're used to just show a sample of what the rate model looks like on the input screens, but again, these have not been updated by any of the expenditures from the budget or the CIP. So here you can see where we would enter in our assumptions. We enter in our system growth, that's based on the ERU increase per year.
ERU stands for?
Equivalent residential unit.
Thank you.
We can also, we also will enter in any CIP escalation here in this area, and that's to escalate the dollars that we enter for, current dollars for future CIP projects. We can put in an escalation factor for that. We enter in our financing terms for any debt that we may have in this, in the rate model, the term and the rate for our debt. And then, most importantly, we enter our bond covenants here. That's the revenue bond covenants that we're required to meet from our revenue bonds, and so the rate model will calculate the rates so that we make sure that we're covering those debt service coverage ratios. Here's where we'll enter our rate schedule. We will enter in our existing rates based on the block ranges that you see there. We will enter in the rates for water and sewer, and then for inside and outside of city. The rate model will then, based on the rates that it calculates, can project out the rates here in this section here. Our revenue history and forecast, we have, we have five years' historical data that's entered into the rate model, so we will be entering in the actual revenue for FY17. We will be using our full-year estimates to enter in the actual numbers for FY18, and then we will enter our budget information for FY19 here, and then it will project it out for the next 10 years. This model will go out for 10 years. The future rates for water and sewer user charges are based on, the revenue is based on the rates that the model will calculate. Other revenues, such as the late charges, water meter purchases, and any other miscellaneous revenues, is based on an escalation factor that we would enter into the model. The expense area, very similar to the revenue section, we will enter in the actual expenses for FY17, the full-year estimate for FY18, and then the budget for FY19. The future expenses here in this, the expense section, though, are calculated on escalation factors as well, and certain groups of expenses have different escalation factors, salaries, benefits, utilities, professional services. We can enter in a different escalations factor for each one of those different types of expense categories. Here you can see where we'll enter in our capital improvement plan. We list every project by name, and then we put out to the right when we project that we will be doing the work on those particular projects. It is a 10-year projection, as is our CIP plan. And here is where we actually establish how we'll fund each project. Will we be funding it with the water and sewer fund balance? Will it be coming from current rates or debt? So this is where we tell the model how we want each project to be funded. And then, in this section is where we enter our existing debt, and we've actually had the amortization schedules of our existing debt entered here so that it's showing actual payments for our existing debt. Any debt that we would use for any CIP project, we'll enter here and we will enter out the amortization schedule for that debt. Short-term borrowing that we may have for equipment or any vehicles that are being funded by the water and sewer is entered in a different section, and then it's calculated based on the assumptions that we entered in the assumptions tab on the financing terms. based on the assumptions that we entered in the assumptions tab on the financing terms. After all of that information is entered in, it rolls up into this panel or dashboard, if you will. And the dashboard is set up, as you can see, the blue and the green lines there for different categories. The blue line is set up to show us what the current rate will, will result in, in the, debt service coverages, and in minimum bill calculations. So that then we can compare that to the green line, that would be the last rate that we ran. So we can actually run this and compare two scenarios at one time. So if we wanted to, you know, let the model run and calculate the rate, and then if we wanted to plug in a rate so that we could compare those two, this panel will allow us to do that. The top line there, where it says override, that is where we can actually enter in a rate per year if we feel like we wanted to do that, just to see how the model calculates. If we do not enter anything there and leave that blank, then the model will calculate adjusting time rates so that we make sure that we're covering our debt service ratios the way they're set up in the assumptions. You can see going down the left side, there is a water rate, a sewer rate, and then a combined rate. We, our rates are all encompassing as one, so the rates would be the same for each water and sewer. The next few lines are talking about our debt service coverage, so we're calculating the debt service coverage based on our senior debt, which is typically the debt related to our revenue bonds. And then the all debt service coverage is all other, the all debt, including the revenue bonds and any subordinate debt for installment purchase financing. The last two lines here on this screen shows the calculation of an average bill based on 6,000 gallons of usage, based on the rates that are shown on the screen here. So, you know, as we would either override the rates or let the rate calculate, then we can see the comparison at the bottom of what a, a bill would be based on 6,000 gallons of usage at those particular rate levels. The bottom part of the panel shows some key metrics that we would measure. The top-left chart shows the fund balance in the water and sewer as it goes through the rate model. The black line in that chart is a target that we can set. So if we want our fund balance to stay at 10 million, then we can set that target to be 10 million. Then it will show us if we're dipping down below that, getting close, and we can adjust rates accordingly. The revenue versus expense chart shows, the blue lines showing the cash coming in from our rates, cash going out from operating expenses, and from CIP transfers. The CIP spending and CIP funding, and then the long-term borrowing chart together, they, they show, you know, where we'll be spending the money each year in the CIP, and then how, where we're funding it from. And you can see the spike in 2018 in all three of those charts. That, again, is based on the Parkwood project and how we have it in the model currently. The water and sewer capital projects fund is just showing the, the level of the fund balance in our water sewer capital project funds as we would take money out to fund any CIP projects. So that's the rate model in a rather quick synopsis. But where do we stand now? We have to update the model with the operating budget, update it with the capital improvement plan. We can manipulate that on how we feel like we want that to go. Then on May the 15th, we'll be ready to come back to you and present rates and discuss those rates. And you certainly can make a decision then, or if we need to go back and run the model again, we can do that, and maybe back on May the 22nd to have further discussion with the rates and the rate model.
Yeah, the, the presentation was intended to be theoretic because we certainly are not to the point of determining what next year's rates are going to be. The important thing, as you work through your budget, the operating budget, which you all have been working on and will continue to work on tonight, that is the expenditure revenue side. The capital improvement budget, which you've had, we need to go back through and make sure that you're comfortable with those in the slot or time period that's proposed. All of it comes together almost like a recipe. Not that I know how to cook, but what, having our rate model, it allows us to take real-time results from the directions you give. So for example, as you go through your expenditure budget and you say, "All of that looks good." Fine, we lock that into the model. Then you come back and you go through your capital improvement, and you say, "Yes, we like those projects." Well, we run them in the model. The next meeting, we come back and we say, "Well, what that means is that you're going to have a 25% rate increase." And you all always say, "That sounds great," or something else, most likely something else. So then we sit down and say, "Okay, what in the capital improvement budget can we do that will move this rate around?" And if you say, "Well, how, what would happen if we delayed this project three years?" We can put it right in the model, bring you back an immediate answer. The advantage of the model, the way that it was set up originally, and the way it is set up now, is your staff operates the manual, the, the operation of the model. It's not a consultant where we have to say, "Well, let us get with the consultant, two or three weeks, we're back in touch with you." We can give you real-time results from the decisions that you make. Beginning in May, we will get down to the water and sewer budget and really need your attention on the capital projects. Because the capital projects will determine what your rates for the coming year or years will be. But that's the value of the new model. You could say, from one standpoint, the old model could have done the same thing. But I'd ask you this: How many of you have had a software package that was issued in, what, 2009, and hasn't been updated since 2017 or '18? Does basically the same things, but it does it much more efficiently, and it gives us much more, if I can use the term, components that we can access. So I think you'll find that the rate model is going to be very beneficial as you move forward over the next six weeks to finalize your overall budget, especially the water and sewer rates for the coming year. Now, Alan, Gail, Carolyn, anything else y'all want to add before we open it up to questions? Hearing none? Questions? Yes, sir.
What effect, get your crystal ball, do some long-term borrowing, interest rates, does that have a minimal effect on the, on your model?
Well, it would affect the debt and the cash flow from the debt. So in our assumptions tab, we will put in the rates on where we think that that may be going. So that's how that would affect the rate model there, the cash flow going out to pay the debt.
And let me give you just an example on that. You know, if you, one of the things we have to deal with is any long-term debt goes through the...
Local government commission.
Who?
Local government commission.
LGC. Thank you very much. All those initials. Goes through the LGC. If you have a project that's only a $5 million project, do you go long-term debt, do you go to short-term debt? It becomes difficult to get those through the LGC. So when you look at debt, what we try to do is fund some of the less expensive projects with our capital balance, which is about 25 million, or something like that right now. And we like to draw that down to no less, I'm sorry, yeah, to no less than 10 to 12 million. And then when we have spent that, we try to bundle that into a longer-term debt. Because then you can go to the LGC, and they will say, "Yeah, that's a large enough quantity." They really don't like to issue debt for numbers that are relatively small. And obviously, when you look at your model, and you look at what you're going into debt for, are you going to go into a 15-year debt or a 30-year debt? And what the model can show you is that if you did this debt for 30 years, obviously the rate's going to be a whole lot less, even though you're going to pay a whole lot more interest. So the, you are correct, Mr. Bittner, the, the long-term borrowing has a direct impact, and the decisions you make on either cash funding and then larger bundled debt versus short-term financing has a major impact on your rates. Do you agree with that? Gail, do you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Apparently not totally. Other questions? Anything else? Okay. Mayor, if you'd like, we could take just a couple of minute break, and then we'll get into the budget discussions. Is that acceptable?
Southside table. Stand in turn for a few minutes.
All right, we're back in session. Uh, Dr. Woodruff, I'll go to you for the next topic.
Thank you. Mayor and members of council, as you will recall, uh, one week ago on April the 10th, we met to discuss certain items in the budget. We sent out to you the budget notes. Several of those had to do with paving. And what we'd like to do is ask if you'd like any follow-up on those. But I would also mention that in the very near future, we're going to have a session that will be dedicated strictly to paving and showing you options that might be used to increase your paving fund. But for the moment, uh, any questions that you had on notes 11 through 18, which were our follow-ups from last meeting? Okay, seeing none. Tonight, we'd like to get into department issues, and we will begin with the fire and emergency services. You're quite familiar with our Boston Red Sox leader. Okay, just trying to help you out of the Yankee stand, helping you all I can. Y'all are off to like a 12 and 2 start, so that's good.
Thirteen and two.
But remember, it's the last 20 games. Who's counting? Is that what you said?
That's right.
But, uh, Chief Hardeston and Chief Hayes are here tonight to go through several of their department issues. Let me remind everyone, especially the public, department issues are things that are currently not in your budget. They could be minor expenses, or they could be fairly major programmatic changes. As the manager, I have not established, uh, them in the budget because I feel the department head should have an opportunity to explain to you their thinking. In most cases tonight, we're not going to ask you to decide yes or no because we want you to see as much of the full budget as possible. But these are issues that could be placed in the budget if you feel that they have value. And again, they're not in the base budget, so anything that you add will come from your fund reserve. So at this type, chief, if you would.
We're looking at, uh, the fire and emergency services and EMT advanced level. Currently, Department of Public Safety has saved 36 lives since 2010, with those numbers going up annually, uh, through the, between the police and fire getting on services and the medical intervention happening at a timely manner, uh, more and more lives are saved every year. Our current call volume, if you notice, about 59% of our call volume, it continues to goes up as medical calls. Uh, rest are based upon fire, fire alarms, but 59% of our calls through a five-year period are medical calls. Uh, current medical instances respond to cardiac chest pains, respiratory distress, trauma, allergic reactions, poisoning or drug-related behavioral psychotic, psych- psychiatric seizures, diabetic emergencies, and third trimester pregnancies. Uh, current EMT basic skills, we obtain baseline vital signs, uh, patient history, perform a patient assessment, uh, basic skills like a basic airway maintenance, provide limited medications, splinting stabilization, hemorrhage control, and perform CPR. Uh, medical response statistics, we've basically in the five-year period had 1,502, uh, that we were basically, we could actually treat 8.7% of the time with the current skill level we're at. Uh, respiratory distress, 2.6% of the time, trauma pretty much zero, this is with medications in the advanced level. Uh, allergic reaction, 20% of the time we were able to treat with medication, behavioral psychotic, 3%, and poison or drug-related, 21% of the time, and seizures, zero. Uh, again, 36 lives saved based upon just those interventions we were allowed to do.
Go back one slide if you would.
Okay.
So what you're saying is although you responded to 1,502 cardiac instances.
Correct.
Using the basic EMT, you were only able to, to assist with really 8.7 of those.
Medications, with medications.
Okay, so that's the way those numbers work.
That doesn't include CPR or anything of that nature, just basically medication and without oxygen.
Okay, thank you.
Um, department issue, implement EMT advanced, current personnel EMT basic, implement a phased-in approach to convert to EMT advanced. Uh, it's to deliver a higher level of service resulting in more favorable outcomes and quality of life, no increase in the current response types. There's a possibility of MOU with the Ozawa County EMS to restock supplies due to the fact that they will be able to charge for our interventions. Uh, what are EMT advanced skills? Endotracheal intubation, we'll actually put an intubation tube down your throat for better access, airway access, administer intravenous access fluids, administer medications without a patient having a prescription. Currently, the patient must have a prescription for us to administer the medications that we currently care. Benefits of an ET tube, protection against aspiration or being able to vomit, uh, more effective ventilation and oxygenation, facilitation of suctioning to clear the airway, and we can deliver drugs via the ET tube also. Benefits of IV access, provide fluids for shock victims, trauma victims, diabetic emergencies, cardiac emergencies, and stroke victims. Benefits of EMT medications, currently we can only deliver medications with a patient's prescription. On advanced though, we'll be able to deliver all medications without prescription or medical Epinephrine can be used, utilized during cardiac emergencies, currently we only use it for people with antelaxic shock, feeling allergic reaction where they stop breathing. Uh, glucose can be delivered through diabetic emergencies. Right now, we can only deliver it to a person that is responsive and has a pain in their way, can breathe, and that can actually swallow. We can do it, deliver it through IV solutions. Uh, deliver a current medication with no prescription or medical control, nitro, albuterol, et cetera. Trauma patients allow for fluid replacement, uh, easier drug administration and prevention in shock, prevention of shock and treatment for shock. Uh, increased suction capabilities, fluid replacement, delivery of epinephrine during a cardiac emergency, and easier drug administration. Uh, training requirements, 160 hours of classroom, 48 clinic hours, which are 24 in emergency room, uh, 48, which is a field internship with Ozawa County EMS, basically ride along, and you have to be boarded, basically by a board to ask you specific questions to make sure you know the protocols. Cost to implement T E M T advanced, training is no cost for the courses, um, no impact on the overtime budget, this training will occur while on duty. Uh, the textbooks for 45 students is $13,000. The initial supplies is $13,500, and we look at an annual stipend for EMT advanced personnel.
Before you leave.
Okay.
Explain the 45 student number.
Forty-five, that would give us 15 personnel per shift. If we go to the advanced level, we must maintain that staffing level on all trucks at all times. You must have an EMT advanced on all trucks. And that allow for personnel to be offered sick leave, for vacation leave, allow 15 per first, per shift.
So you're not going to every person who's a firefighter or with the fire department, you're simply going to 45 selected individuals?
Of the 87 shift personnel.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Kind of think it's a good idea, but I'm going, just a question. As far as you know, would there be any effect on our insurance ratings in terms of possible suits against malpractice or something?
Don't know the answer to that, John.
Well, we did make inquiries, been a while back.
Yep.
There is a Good Samaritan law in North Carolina that protects, uh, actions like this. Uh, I don't know that we got into any kind of premium increases or whatever, or discussions about that because again, even with Good Samaritan laws, people sue even, uh, occasionally and never get anything, but you have to have the cost of defense and so forth.
Would we be covered by Good Samaritan law that we're, we're, we're offering this service as a professional rather than a Good Samaritan as a layperson?
Yeah, but I don't know that, we're not thinking about charging for this service.
No, sir.
Chief?
No, sir, no charges.
But I think, uh, one of the things that's in our.
Why don't you come up to the table?
I think one of the things that's in our budget is to, to have a medical director, and what basically we would do is we would operate under his medical license. So that, that, that gives us a, a level of protection. So if they sue us for, for doing something that's evasive, either intubation, IVs, or anything else that's innovative, we, we operate under his protocol and his license. So his malpractice insurance would provide us some coverage with the Good Samaritan Act because we don't actually provide services as a physician does. A physician provides services because he's, he's a licensed physician. We do it under his license, under his direction.
Is that what he, excuse me, is that what EMS does?
That's exactly how EMS operates. So that's, that's why in, that you'll find in the budget that we're, that we'll be contracting with Dr. Frank as a medical, uh, as our medical advisor, so that we could operate under his license.
Okay.
Will we have to pay anything addition towards his medical malpractice insurance?
Yes, and that, and that's, that's what's in your budget is when he, when we contacted him initially, he said, you know, this would be the cost in order to, uh, in order to.
It's $1,500 a month.
As well as.
$1,500 per month.
Yeah, pay, pay his insurance premiums because he would be taking on, uh, this 45 additional personnel. And he would, actually with that, he would be the medical advisor for the entire department as well as, as the police officers that are administering Narcan now using the AEDs. So it gives us another level of protection as far as liability if, if somebody sues.
And so, and so our, um, paramedics, our firefighters would not have to carry any medical malpractice on themselves?
No, they wouldn't. They'd be covered by the league, and, and then they'd be also be covered by, by his malpractice insurance since he directs those folks that are in the field, even though he's not there, they have to follow a particular protocol. If they follow that particular protocol, his license protects them.
You can't, I can't help but the nurse is kicking out at me. So say for example, you have a firefighter who just happens to be, let's just say, running up, running the rails for trail, and there happens to be an unresponsive victim and they rendered aid without, um, after they called 911, but something happens to that particular individual, let's just say something that the, um, the paramedic was doing, and they may be held liable for it, so there is no other recourse to protect that individual?
When we're off duty, we're basically covered under Good Samaritan law.
Okay, okay.
That's what we're covered at, under Good Samaritan law, when we're off duty.
Well, let me, let me also clarify, uh, we need the medical doctor, whether we do EMT advanced or not, the EMT basic, now that is in the base budget already. As I said to you earlier, these are items that would be added to the base budget. So if that's a new item, why isn't it, why isn't it here? It was brought to our attention that in the past, our EMT basic has been covered by the county contracting with this doctor. We believe that it is a more secure arrangement from a liability standpoint to have a direct contract with this doctor, and he agrees. So whether you go to EMT advanced or stay at EMT basic, your budget contains $18,000 in fire for us hiring this doctor to be our medical.
Director.
Director.
So, so you're saying that our legal department is recommending that we do this?
No, uh, let me state this. The EMT basic versus the EMT advanced is a political decision, a policy decision by you. It's about the level of service that you want to give to your citizens. Now, John and I both agree, you need to have a medical director, and that's why that $18,000 is already in the budget.
Okay.
So whether you go with EMT A or stay with EMT basic, you need a medical examiner. Do you concur?
I do.
Okay.
So as part of the, is this part of the response system in order to, so when you arrive at a scene, we administer the basic level until EMS gets there?
Correct.
So are you finding that there's a gap of time between?
It can be anywhere from five minutes to 20 minutes.
So that's why you're recommending the new level of education since we are responding to so many.
Correct.
Cases, and we're the first ones on the scene, that we would be better apt to fulfill that immediate need rather than doing the basic and then continuing to wait for EMS to get there.
Correct, because Ozawa County system is taxed with over 18,000 calls per year.
And let's go back and look at the chart. I apologize for running backwards, uh, instead of asking Glenn to do it. Let's take the first one, the chest pain cardiac. Over the last five years, we've had 1,500 calls. We've gotten there to all 1,500 calls. With basic, we've been able to assist other than just the general things that you would be able to do with compressions and.
Oxygen.
Oxygen and things like that. We've been able to treat 9% of them, 8.7%. Let's move forward and look at specifically on the heart. Jerry, tell me when to stop.
Right there.
Right there. Okay. Tell them what you're going to be able to do now that you can, with the advanced, that you can't do with the basic.
We'd basically be able to start establishing IV to get fluid started during the compression session and administer epinephrine, which is one of the key components of delivery during a cardiac emergency. Uh, currently, if a person does not have a prescription for epinephrine, and we're not allowed right now currently to administer it during a cardiac emergency at all because you need IV access.
Quick question here. EMS does this already.
Correct.
What we're doing is we're supplementing it to increase our coverage, basically, but we're not alleviating, we're not letting EMS, uh, off the hook as far as responding.
No, sir.
They're still going to respond.
Correct.
This is not about who puts them in the ambulance, who owns the ambulance, who takes them to the hospital. This is really about what are we doing from the time we receive the 911 call till the time the ambulance shows up? Now, the personnel who are on the county ambulance is, what level of training do they have?
Paramedic level.
And the paramedic level is above the EMT A.
Correct.
So care is transferred once they hit the scene?
Correct.
From you?
Correct.
You transfer care over?
Yes.
So basically, it'll essentially increase your response time for effective level and survival rate.
Survival rate, that's what we're looking at. We're looking to increase our survival rate.
Responders.
Correct.
It's really.
Sounds like a good idea to me as far as.
It is a good time.
You know, increasing that level of service. I know that if I'm the one out there having a heart attack, I'm sure wish y'all would have done it, you know?
Do you have any projections of what these percentage would be?
I would think the projection would be somewhere in the neighborhood of, like on the cardiac, which was down around 8%, somewhere around 30 to 35% or higher.
Now, that doesn't mean we're saving any lives.
That means we're giving it a better opportunity.
Increasing their chances.
That's correct. Creating our better opportunity.
Yeah, I think we could, you know, if we can do this at level, at this level of service at what we're looking at as far as the expense, I think it's a great service to our citizens.
Well, hang on to the next couple of slides.
Oh, gosh. Haven't seen the whole onslaught yet, right?
Oh, but that's them. It's going to be on their time.
In the budget for, uh, for your consideration is $26,500 for training and supplies. Most departments, I'm not going to say all because I don't know if that's a true statement, most departments give a stipend for the personnel who are doing the advanced. For example, if you, and I'll give you, uh, if you're in the fire department and you are on the bomb squad, you know that you get whatever it is, a $500 stipend. It's not part of your base salary, it is simply additional pay. Most departments give a stipend if you become an EMT A. Jerry, can you give us some examples of departments that give stipends?
Durham Fire Department, uh, and a good example, local example is Moorehead City Fire Department gives a $7,000 stipend.
Who?
Moorehead City.
Moorehead.
Between the basic and the advanced level, $7,000 stipend.
Now, let's talk about, let's talk about real money here. Uh, I can tell you that your budget can't afford that level of money, not now. And we're not asking you at this point to make a decision, we're just giving you information. One option is to adopt the program, spend the $26,500 in fiscal year 19, that's the one we're talking about budgeting, and then in fiscal year 20, for all those people who have received their certifications, begin the stipend program. You could decide that you're going to give a stipend of $1,000. Well, 45 people times 1,000, even though Gil doesn't let me do math in public, I can give you that one. Let's say you decide to give a $3,000 stipend. You can see that the cost. that the cost is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. For five thousand, it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If you go to seven thousand, it gets to be a much larger number that I won't calculate. One option that you may have is to decide that you're going to implement it in one year, meaning that you're going to adopt the program and a budget from now, you're going to move everybody to the total stipend. Let's say that you pick five thousand dollars for the stipend. Well, you move everybody there in one year, it's going to cost you two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Maybe you phase it in over two years, maybe you phase it in over three years, you can phase it in, you know. I will tell you, I do not believe there's a single firefighter that's going to quit because they got the training and they didn't get the full stipend in one year. These are dedicated people, just as your police and other city employees are. One option would be something like this. You get the books and the training in nineteen, you give a thousand dollar stipend in twenty, then you add another thousand to that in twenty-one, another thousand in twenty-two, and by doing something like that, you're doing, if I can use the term, the easy payment plan, where you're not having to find all that money in one year. You're getting the benefit from the very first year, but what you're doing is saying, folks, we're going to get you there to a reasonable stipend, but we, because we only have so much money to spend, we're going to give it to you in portions. And of course, you know, that's, that's just an example of a recommendation that we can give.
So the stipend is initially set out as a one-time event, or is it just annual?
No, it's an, it's an annual number-
Every year.
But let me explain to you the difference between stipend and base pay. Every time you get a pay increase, your base pay goes up, but the stipend just-
Just stays constant.
Just stays constant. So let's say for discussion purposes that y'all agree to a three thousand dollar stipend, and I'm a firefighter and I'm making forty thousand dollars. That means that my pay is going to be forty-three thousand dollars. The next year, you give a two percent pay increase. Well, forty thousand dollars just went up to forty thousand eight hundred dollars, but the three thousand dollar stipend didn't change. It's still, now you're making forty, whatever the number was, was three thousand?
Forty-eight.
Okay, forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. So the stipend, the reason why the stipend is important is this. Firefighter decides, you know, this just isn't for me. I'm not going to keep my certificate up to speed. He loses that stipend. He just goes back to being a firefighter. It's not part of the base pay, it is extra pay for certifications.
So the, well, it's like two hundred and some hours it would take-
Correct. It's a, it'll be a year-long process, being able to do it on shift, without overtime.
So they, so they'll do it at work, they're not going to have to do it on time?
Correct.
And there will be no overtime pay for it?
Nope.
Chief Harrison, has, what is the factor rate for recert classes, when their certification has to be renewed?
We do recertification on an annual basis, that's not-
So there's no cost to the city?
No, it'll be, it'll be like we have Con Ed right now for, basically, because some more class stuff to add on, but it'll all be done at the station, on ship, at no cost.
Now, what if you have a firefighter who decides that he or she wishes to leave after they have obtained his certification? It's because then our return of investment is counted as a negative against us. So there, is there any type of penalty, that after they receive this type of training, that they must remain with the fire department for X amount of months or years?
Well, the answer there is, from the fire department perspective, no. Let's talk about the city policy. If the city spends training money on you, and you leave within a certain time period of getting that training, then you are required to pay the city back that training. But now, remember, in this case, the training cost is almost incidental. It's done on, you know, what Jerry is testifying to you is that the training is twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the forty-five personnel.
And that's books and supplies, that's, yeah.
So-
How can they ride with the EMS while they're on our clock? Just clock them in-
What we do is, we'll run shift, we'll be able to drop a unit for a specific amount of time. We'll do one or two at a time, not the whole group at a time. We'll be able to, we keep a minimum staffing number, we'll keep at that minimum staffing number. Anything above that, we'll allow off to go do that at a time, and come right back on.
That's one of your budget decisions. Any other questions? Like I said, we're not asking you to make a decision, I, we just want you to think about it. The next one we want to talk about is the active shooter vest. Jerry?
Um, and a lot of the things that are happening in the United States with the active shooters at the schools, domestic violence, that we actually go on, most time we stage out at a distance away from the calls. But there are times that even, over the last one, we had pretty close proximity to the actual, actual incidents occurring. These vests will be carried, each person will get basically a carrier to put the plates in. The plates will be carried on units, so each individual will not be getting plates to be carried on a unit. And also, these types of vests also have a ten-year shelf life versus an average of a five-year shelf life. We feel that on a domestic situation especially, being able to carry a vest that you can put on prior to entering the scene, even though the scene may be secured, you never know. It's a, it's a safety factor, is what it is. A lot of fire departments and EMS personnel are going to this because the types of calls we respond on.
This doesn't fall under that bulletproof vest program, is that still active?
It, it's, we still utilize that, oh, I'm sorry. We still utilize that, but no, it does not.
Solely for police?
Solely for police.
These are not fitted vests, these are just basically carriers with plates.
What does that mean? Now, what does that mean?
What does that mean?
It's a, it's a vest that you slide the plate in the front and slide the plate in the back.
Oh, okay.
So the plates will be carried on truck, because if not, you'd be talking buying eighty-eight sets of gear at four hundred fifty dollars apiece. And that would be, you know, way too much at that point in time.
But now, think of the carrier, basically, if I can use the term, as pockets. And when you get in the truck, you'll simply slide this plate into those pockets.
Slide one in the front, slide one in the back.
And they're still able to-
You, you figure basic time is going to be on a medical call, so you're not going to be wearing turnout gear, anything of that nature. You'll be wearing Basic, your uniform.
Next, extra-
Good for ten years?
Yes, sir. Good for ten years. They're steel plates.
Now, I will, I will also say to you, they're probably good, Mayor, for a lot longer than that. But in order to keep that good housekeeping seal that we have on all of our fire equipment, they say anything, including ladders and hand axes, you have to only keep them so long.
I wouldn't run on day past that date either.
Extrication equipment.
Uh, we're looking at currently, asking the department issue to purchase extrication equipment to install on engine two. During the Gumratch West corridor, we've had some serious motor vehicle collisions there at the intersection of Gumratch and Western, which can be delayed with a rescue truck getting there and starting extrication. That is pretty one of our highest corridor areas. It also would help utilize that truck as a backup for the city for extrication, in case our rescue truck down. But we also utilize pump consider as a backup also.
Now, remember, the rescue truck is at the main station here downtown.
Correct.
Station two is the truck that comes out of the Commons.
No, Station two is Western Boulevard, Gumratch Road.
Station two comes out of, Station two is our new station on Gumratch.
Gumratch Road.
Thank you.
Extrication equipment, are you talking about saws or?
No, that will be basically a cutter and a spreader. They call it the jaws of life, but we call it a cutter, spreader, rams to basically force the doors open to extricate.
Have none of those now?
We have them on the rescue truck.
We have one.
How often do you get, respond, have to respond to this type of call?
Uh, we run about forty-five or fifty per year extrications. And the rescue, of course, also responds to medical calls, so the chance of being timed up, we had three hundred and thirty-eight simultaneous calls last year.
Where the rescue truck was on a medical call at the same time that it-
That it was another type of incident.
Okay. Something to think about. See if there's fire training ground.
Uh, currently, this, the training ground is controlled by Onzeo County. We're looking at a lease to get the training ground back. The county has done very little maintenance on the facility. The burn room out there needs an engineer to test it at roughly fifteen thousand dollars minimum, plus the repairs. So we're looking at, if we receive the training ground back, it'll take approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to bring it up into the condition or near condition, that's when we released it, and back in twenty-fourteen.
And then further improvements would be dependent upon the creation of a master plan. There's been discussion of a number of improvements, including everything from removing people from cave-ins to driving areas and so forth. But if you, if you do get the lease of the property back from the county commission, during the next year, we will create a master plan, whether you do this twenty-five thousand or not. If we get the lease back, we will do a master plan, bring it to you for approval, that will show you all of the improvements that we'll be needing to make over a period of time. Currently, as you know, all of our training is done on city time. We do not train on an overtime basis. The training ground that is proposed, and probably under construction down near Swansboro, is not a facility that we can recommend using. And the reason why is, that would take our overtime budget to a very large number, because obviously, you can't be on duty and train in Swansboro and respond to our calls in four and a half to five minutes.
Where are we on that agreement?
We have received a draft, and we had made a couple of modifications to it, sent it back to the county attorney. Presently, the draft came, and there was no modifications. The twenty-year lease is what, the draft came to us, and we sent that back with a couple of minor modifications, we considered anyway. And we're waiting now for the county attorney to check with the manager and get back with us.
The facility would be under our complete jurisdiction?
Yes, sir.
Not the county?
Complete jurisdiction of the city. And the proposal that we gave the county, it showed the protocols that anyone, anyone could use the facility, but they would have to use it within the protocols established by the city, which Fire and Emergency Services and Public Safety helped draft, along with the attorney and the city manager's office. But if you're from Richlands, if we lease the facility, you can come down at no charge and use it, provided that you go through the protocols of establishing an event coordinator, getting the keys, locking it up, so forth and so forth.
How does that work on the insurance?
Well, one of the things that we do require in the protocol is that you have your own insurance, and you have to show us the proof of insurance.
What, I'm confused. What's not working well right now? I mean, why do we want to take on the cost of this, when it, when it's on Onzeo County that should be open to all Onzeo County fire departments to use? Or is, is there-
Because they want to move, they want to move the facility.
They're currently not maintaining the facility all out there. Burn room is not being maintained. There's very little, or they're cutting the grass.
So why did we give it up back in fourteen?
Quite bluntly, people were using it while we had it leased without our permission, and they were, they were using it without liability insurance. And what we told the county was, either you allow us to enforce these policies and protocols, or we're turning the lease back over to you. We had an incident where a young child was allowed to climb the outside of the burn tower while his father was in training. And when we found out about that, you know, if that child had fallen off, that child was not covered by anybody's insurance except ours. And because of the liability at that time, we said to the county, county, you're either going to enforce these protocols and policies, or we're giving up the lease. Unfortunately, at that time, that county administration said, no, we're not going to enforce them. So we say, well, we're not going to accept the liability for people who are doing things that are not necessarily appropriate to be done out there. So we turned the lease back in. That left us without a training facility. We do have several options. One is to buy our own land and to develop our own training facility. Unfortunately, the county's approach right now is to create a training facility down at Swansboro. And that just doesn't work for us from a budgeting standpoint of overtime and, and training.
And ISO is, one of the components of ISO is having a training ground, and ISO is capable to come visit here in September.
Well, you still have one in Swansboro, right? I mean, you say have one, does it have to be in your-
It's Holly 172, we don't utilize that one.
I understand that.
We do not utilize that training ground. That's the college's training ground, is what that is. That's a college level, that's the college's training ground. And they are willing to pump more money into the Georgetown training ground, because they realize it's a few leopard out there with the distance for volunteers to come train.
But the other thing is, we train our people while they're on duty.
That's right, versus an overtime budget.
Yeah. And that would create a serious overtime liability by-
Carrying trucks all the way out there.
Exactly. And it puts them out of service.
Correct.
Period. Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm not happy, the whole thing. It just doesn't make, it doesn't make good sense. If we're going to take it back, I don't want to lease it out to anybody unless we charge them. I mean, if it's, if we've got a problem where we can't cooperate, then let's, let's keep everybody else out?
That sort of flies in the face of the mutual aid agreements we have done, doesn't it?
Well, the whole thing doesn't make sense. Why can't we, why can't we maintain what's currently there? I don't care who, who pays, I mean, I think we all want to share in the, in the cost of the darn thing. I don't understand why we have to take on the cost just for us.
Well, I don't disagree with you. I can tell you that former chiefs, and Mike Inara and I have attended the meetings of the Fire Commission, and we have asked for portions of the one-quarter cent fund that we're all paying sales tax for emergency management, including fire. And we have asked it specifically for this center, and we have been told, no. You know, at the end of the day, we have to do something to train our firefighters. And I don't disagree with you that if it's our money going into it, we should have total control over it. You know, I, I am also one, and I'll just go ahead and unload the rest of the wagon, I am one that believes, as your manager, that you should not get city services unless you pay city taxes. We send our rescue truck outside the city on a regular basis. I have no problem sending a pumper to a volunteer fire department, because they have a pumper that they can send to help us. But when we send an aerial truck that costs a million and a quarter out to help someone who doesn't pay city taxes, when they don't have an aerial truck to send to us when we need it, that causes me a problem. Why do I pay taxes as a city taxpayer if others are getting the same service free? And I'll finish unloading this and then try to settle down on this issue this way, because I am very serious about this. For city police officers to go to a subdivision that's directly across the street from the city, when that person sold those houses saying, you'll get city services without city taxes, and we send our police department out there, that just simply doesn't work for me. Why do we pay city taxes if we give our services away to those who don't pay city taxes? Now, fortunately, I'm going to go on vacation tomorrow, and y'all will have to listen to this. But I'm, I'm serious about the fact. We want cooperation with the county commission. And I will say to you, Jack Bright and this group of county commissioners has given us great cooperation in so many ways. But there also comes down the bigger issue of fairness. If our taxpayers are paying for these facilities, then it's our taxpayers who should be getting the credit for it. And that includes police response. I know we have all the mutual aid, but I can tell you, this past year, we have had at least six instances of workers' compensation, where our officers responded outside the city to taxpayers who weren't in the city, nor paying any city taxes. They wound up getting hurt, and we're the ones paying the workers' comp bill. I know this is not something that y'all like to deal with, because cooperation, you know, I, I know that if a, if a person is dying and they live across the street from City Hall, it's awfully hard to tell our EMTs not to go help them. But I'll also say this, every city taxpayer is the one who's paying that bill. And until the state legislature gives us the ability to start charging people who don't pay city taxes, then it's really, it's not a fair situation. And with that, I'm going to wave the white flag on myself.
You know, you know, in a lot of places, though, with, Richard, you know, these are services that are contracted, contractual law enforcement, contractual fire service, where they are being, the cities are being paid to provide this service. And like you say, we've been doing this as a mutual aid thing, but, you know, I've always had, myself had a little bit of heartburn about, you know, servicing these areas that are outside the city limits. I think, I look at it as just going to another jurisdiction, basically, is what you're doing. And I think that's how it should be treated, but-
We actually talked about that some years ago, about establishing-
Hard, fast rules.
Some hard, fast rules and, and rate structure for, for responding, because we were outside quite a bit some years ago, before you, you were here. So it's been an ongoing issue. And the real issue that I have, kind of like what you've alluded to, is that we've got real estate agents that pat themselves on the back by convincing someone to- real estate agents that pat themselves on the back by convincing someone to move across the street from the city or in the area and convince them they could still get city services while not paying taxes, while those that live in the city pay double taxation to get these services. And so you make very valid points.
I'm in favor of, of mutual and equal aid. Again, you got a pumper, we got a pumper. We got a ladder truck and you got a ladder truck, that's mutual and equal. Enough said on my part.
I was going to say, I would be, I would prefer that all of the counties, municipalities and the counties help invest in a central training ground. If that's not to be, and we have to do our own, then the only way that I'd be willing to, to let somebody else use it is if they paid something. Either paid part of the annual maintenance or paid a charge to come in, a usage charge to come in and charge, train it. I'm not willing to let them just have it for free. Because we're paying, we're already paying on the county side, we're paying on the city side. It's just not fair and equal to me. So that's my two, my, my two cents worth there.
Get out your flag.
But it is problematic. I mean, it, it is, and I'm sure a lot of our taxpayers think the same way, that, you know, why are we still paying, you know, these double taxes when you're getting all this pushback every time you want to do something like that? We get pushed back on the sales tax, we get pushed back on a lot of things, you know. So it's like you say, mutual, sometimes I think takes on a whole different meaning than what I, I think mutual means, but...
Is there anything in this proposed agreement that would prevent us from charging another municipality the use of it?
That's why I made a comment because I knew you're, you're trying to draft up something here.
Well, the draft, as I recall, of course, number one, everything has to be approved by the county, master plan, et cetera. And again, the protocols, et cetera, would have to be approved by county management. There are some challenges to make sure that they're on board before, you know, y'all were to move forward with a, a large investment there. But yes, there, we want the council to clearly look at it in detail when it comes back.
But they're not using it for anything right now.
I don't think so.
No, sir. And the other thing, Mr. Bittner, you do have to approve the lease. Now, the way the lease is drafted, it would not charge others. But that doesn't mean that when you review it, that you couldn't come back and say to the management, "Richard, we don't agree with this lease this way. This is the only way that we're going to agree to lease it," is if you actually charge people a, a usage per hour based upon the investment we're making.
Richard, is this strictly for fire training?
At the moment, it is. If you establish a driving course there, it could be used for police personnel additionally, but right now it's intended for fire training.
Strictly fire training?
Yes, sir.
Would they be willing to sell us the property?
I was told by the county manager for $325,000, they'd be willing to sell the property.
It's how much property? Acres?
Roughly five acres.
To include the towers that are there?
The towers, we put there.
Yeah, we built the towers.
We put the tower there, okay.
Everything that's out there has already been paid for by city taxpayers. I don't, I may be wrong on that, but I believe it's correct that everything there, fence and everything, is that correct?
The county put $10,000 in, the old Farmers Association put $10,000 in for the fence and that's about it.
But the lease you're talking about is there's no real compensation to the county for the...
Yeah, it's a dollar a year for the 20 years.
Right, yeah.
But again, I don't know if any figures have been worked on as far as what a master plan may cost the city to have it for that 20 years, even if all other details were able to be worked out. And that's debt to be determined, correct?
I would hate to put money into, in a, I would hate to put money into leased property. At the end of 20 years, who's, they may say, "Hey, that's pretty nice. We'd like it back."
I agree with Bob. I think if we have an opportunity to look at buying it, I think we need to pursue that.
Well, how about if we do this? Let us analyze options for a facility, not necessarily that facility. We can be one of the options we bring back to you.
Maybe we could, we could deal with them that only charges half that price that you said since our taxpayers paid half of it anyway. That'd be fair.
I'll prepare a letter for your signature.
That'd be, that'd be mutual.
I think that's it for fire?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other non-controversial issues?
Lilly, can you join us a moment? Wally, are you?
Water quality. Oh, yeah. I like quality water.
I don't know, I'm getting some brush spots in my wall.
Thank you. Oh, no, Ms. Gray? Several years ago, Community Development purchased property down near Sturgeon City on Wardola and Loyola. There were, this probably goes back, what, 12 to 15 years, 20 years? Okay. The concept at that time was to build affordable housing on these properties. There are several great location for them, right across the street from the park. There's only one problem. Elevation is one foot, literally. And with the new FEMA maps, what does that do to us building houses there?
Stilts.
Stilts, still housing.
Or actually, what does FEMA actually say about the HUD program?
Well, with federal funds, we couldn't build anyway because they're in a flood zone. And we have to be able to justify to HUD while, why would these lots be desired over any other lot in the city? Why would we put low-income people in a flood zone when we have non-flooding areas? And also, in addition to that, you've got the extra cost of flood insurance, which would make it not affordable for the target audience that we're trying to reach. So we got two issues. We have other options and we have an affordability issue.
Now, that brings up the department issue. And you'll notice the title here is Purchase of CD Lots, but it's under the title of somewhere here, I guess all the way back to water quality. So why do we connect the two? Community development money is in these lots. Community development's not ever going to be able to use them. So in fairness, if we bought them for CD purposes, but all it's ever going to be is Mother Nature, then CD should not be the holder of those lots. So what we're recommending is over a period of years, probably three years, that we begin to purchase these lots using the Stormwater Fund. Because remember, part of Stormwater's permit is that we must do things to improve water quality. And believe me, anytime you want to ride by those lots, you can see that to a great degree, they're nothing but percolation ponds that allow water to be filtered or just simply percolate in the ground. If you approve this concept, then the first year, you'll basically spend about $47,000 and some of these lots will be transferred over. Do you, although the graphic shows it in this format, how many lots do we actually have? Just that division or there...
That one, and then there's one across the street. And then there's also a few on Ford Street.
Okay. But basically, what we're looking at, each of these large areas, you know, for example, I don't think I can draw on this. No, I can't. Look what I did. Whatever I did, we'll go back to this. What we're saying is that over time, we will simply sell these to Stormwater.
And what will we do with it?
It will simply become Mother Nature and Conservation. You know, just, just be part of your Stormwater program. Any questions for Lilly on this?
You wouldn't consider putting them on the market at all, see if somebody's willing to...
I suppose you could see if somebody is willing to do that. But, you know, again, for the moment, moving...
They wouldn't pay $47,000.
No, no.
Well, what we can also do is show you that, we need to actually show you, and I apologize, we should have shown you every lot and what we think the total cost is going to be because in the end, you're going to be spending about $120,000 to convert all of this over. Gail, do you have an idea of what the total amount is?
I don't remember.
We'll get that, we'll get that for you. But it's the concept of beginning to transition these lots from CD into the Stormwater Fund.
And I'm assuming that we're reimbursing what was originally paid for...
Yes, this is that cost of what we paid tax value at that time. So no profit to CD.
Well, I'll also say unfortunately, that's what you're doing. Because when you actually look at the price that you paid for these, you paid a whole lot more... I'm sorry, Wally?
You think you just paid tax value?
Oh, yeah, back then we did, tax value.
We believed the tax value back then was much greater than the present today.
Yeah, you won't have a tax value on these of $15,000.
There was at least one structure on the lots because we had to relocate a tenant back when we bought it.
But we, we won't be recovering that cost. That's just a cost of doing business for CD. It's only the cost of the land. So that's the concept on that one. Ed Richards and Gail, come up, please. This is to, again, these are not necessarily things I'm going to be recommending to you, but in fairness to the department heads, those that, that I couldn't just outright deny or outright approve. So Ed, talk about your need for administrative part-time assistant.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Over the past five or six years, Fleet has, has grown. We just keep getting bigger with transit, commercial dumpster service, more and more vehicles. That all comes down in paperwork. We still have the same person in the front office to handle and more and more paperwork. The scope of a work is still the same, except the volume has gone way up. So there's more work orders, there's more paperwork, there's more purchase orders and everything else that goes into maintaining the city fleet. What I was asking for was a part-time person, 20 hours a week, 20 hours, yeah, 20 hours a week. So it'd be five days, five hours a day, four days a week. It would be a non-benefitted employee. It would give us the ability to get this stuff done that we're pushing off now. We have accident stuff that should be done, paperwork should be done right when we see the accident, but they get out-prioritized by other things. So then when we have an accident review committee, for two days, we're just rushing on it, trying to get all the thing in line. So we have everything when we go to the meeting. Our fuel system is the same way. We need just a little bit of extra hands to do that type of work. It doesn't need to be a full-time person. Like I said, it's just to take the, the weight off of the person that's in there. It really starts binding up when somebody goes on vacation. I mean, they go on vacation for a week, there's nobody there to do that work. So it just keeps piling up and piling up. And then they just have to come back and do whatever we can. So that's really what this person, to just take some of the pressure off of the admin that's in the front office, just because of the sheer volume of paperwork that comes through there now, since the city fleet just keeps getting bigger and bigger.
And you'll notice that this charge would be spread through all of the funds, you know, whether it's sanitation, whether it's stormwater or, or water and sewer. I will also say to you though, that we recognize Ed has this issue. This, I will tell you now, this is not one I'm going to recommend to you because Wally and I are talking about with the reorganization over that you were notified of earlier this week. We're going to look at how we can accomplish Ed's mission and needs without hiring an additional person. But in fairness to him, I wanted him to come and at least give you his sales pitch and do a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ed.
Parks, Michael, and Scott and Jason. Gentlemen, I think they know you, but introduce yourself.
I'm Jason Smith. I'm the Older Coach, your department.
Scott Feroz, the Assistant Park Superintendent.
Michael LaCoria, Director of Parks Facilities. Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Okay. The first department issue is an additional piece of equipment. It's a mini tractor. It looks like it doesn't cost much, but remember, that's actually a five-year debt that we'll be doing. So please.
Well, this piece of equipment for us is, and I want to make you aware, we have a mini track loader today. You're familiar with it. Hopefully, it is what built a lot of the Baywood Memorial Grove, has been very active in the amphitheater. It's also been active in a lot of the landscaping items, islands that you see us, see us do. What we're requesting is the same, same type of equipment, but a little bit bigger version of it. And why do we need a bigger version of it? We need a bigger version because there are limitations to the piece that we currently have. We are not able to move pallets aside. We are not able to move pavers. So we have weight restrictions. If we are going to look at purchasing a second one, we need to go ahead and get one that can do the things that we do on a daily basis. I will also make you aware that the current track loader that we, we own is not yet three years old and it has almost 700 hours on it. So this is a piece of equipment for us that's vital to who we are and what we do.
Anything you gentlemen want to add? So y'all are just alone for good, for good looks?
Moral support.
Okay. Let's talk about the propane tank and the success that we've had with converting our mowers. So the justification is shown?
Well, you know, the propane tank for us, we started three years ago, basically. And it was, sitting here today, it has been a pretty good success story for us. We have seven mowers currently that we use, two vehicles that are also online. Moving forward, we're going to continue to add vehicles. We're going to continue to add mowers as they're replaced throughout time as, as we continue moving forward. And when we initially did this, we didn't know where we were going with it. So our current setup is that we rent a tank, a 500-gallon tank, and the company we rent from is proprietary. They have to fill the tank. So when we first got this, we started with two or three mowers and maybe once every two months, they were coming to fill it up. Well, we're now to the point now that basically we're on a week and a half fill-up. As we continue to add things, the tank's not going to be large enough. So in talking with, with Mr. Richards, with Fleet, and how, how do we move forward the best possible way? And talking with Ed, we think the best possible way for us to move forward is to actually purchase a tank. And then we're going to be able to bid out quarterly, as an example, who can bring us fuel and how much it will be. So we'll have a little bit more control over what the prices will be in moving forward.
And this is not gasoline. Again, this is the propane conversion for our mowers and a couple of our vehicles.
Correct.
Any questions you have of those?
What size tank?
Two thou, we have currently 500. We need to, we think 2,000 will get us for the next, you know, 10 years.
Is it located at the Commons?
It is. We have actually a tank there with a pump and we are able to do that instead of paying a fee to have someone come in and refill our tanks. We actually had to get some people certified on how to fill the tanks up and we're able to do that within our confines over at the Parks Building.
And what are your, what are the advantages you're finding from running propane?
Well, I, I think the biggest, you know, I think there's a couple of advantages. What we've learned, and it's hard to, to do the, the cost analysis. And so, for example, the first thing I would say from Fleet's perspective, and I, by no means want to speak for Ed, is I think they see less maintenance on the items that are being used through propane. For example, the engines are going to hold up a little bit better. Would you agree with that, Ed? Yeah. So from, from a maintenance perspective, they're not dealing with problems that maybe we see currently through either a diesel or even a gas mower or even gas vehicle. So on the cost side of it, it's a little bit cheaper. Or the last couple of years, it's been a little bit cheaper to go with propane. But moving forward at the rate that gas is going up, I will tell you, you will probably see more savings because propane won't go up at, at the rate, or we didn't see that earlier, that propane surely didn't go up at the rate gas was going up. So those are the advantages to moving to the propane, not to mention that a green environment. You know, it's, it's definitely a green environment and that's a good thing.
And the ability to be able to bid that out will, will, will save you a lot of money because of the proprietary aspect of it. They know that people have to change tanks every time you change a company, so that...
Right, there's a cost involved for that if you go that way.
So that gives you the ability to get better pricing on your propane.
And you know, one of the initials, initial concerns of that was that we would be responsible for the maintenance of the tank. But what we, through, through a little bit of calling around and research, what we found out is the tanks... and research, what we found out is the tanks generally aren't going to fail. So hopefully, that would not be a problem for us moving forward.
I don't think you have any other department issues?
No, sir.
Okay. And courtesy of the...
Oh, we do have landscaping. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Real quickly, then, let's talk about landscaping rocks.
All right. I'll try and do this really quick. It's, it's, uh, we spend around $16,000 a year to mulch the Parkway Huff Drive, uh, Highway 17 from the interchange all the way back. Uh, that's a nice chunk of change that we're going to continue to have to spend each year. What we're proposing is that we look at putting stone in those islands, not brick chips, because DOT will not allow us to do brick chips. But we'd like to engage DOT in putting stone in. We've seen it done in Emerald Isle, where there's a 45 mile an hour speed limit. We feel like these are good candidates for that. Uh, the cost for it is basically adding $8,000 for the next four to five years. We can turn this over. Then you're not going to have the cost of mulch for the rest of our lives. As long as we continue to use mulch, not just today, tomorrow, and moving forward, we're going to continue to have those costs. We're going to have mulch in the city in some places. But these are large places that are tough for us to get into, and it just seems cost-effective from our end to do, uh, do this moving forward.
And the other thing I would mention, all you have to do is look at City Hall. We put brick chips in here almost eight years ago. And other than minor maintenance, hadn't been back. Before that, we were here at least twice a year, sometimes three times a year. The product was not that expensive, but the labor, and so again, it's just one of the three Es. If you want to see what these things look like, just go to Emerald Isle, right down the street from the pizza shop, and you will find beautiful medians that they put in there in front of the new Publix.
Looks good, too.
So, with that, and courtesy of your time, if it's all right with you, we will stop now, and we will pick back up in two weeks.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.